I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd invite everyone to rise and join in the fudge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, if we could have rule call, please.
Here.
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 You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our February 7th meeting. If you had a chance to review those minutes, I'd look for a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
A motion from Wiley.
Second.
Second from Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the same. The minutes have been approved. First thing on the agenda tonight is Hoosier Start is here to talk about deferred comp. And Matt, right? Todd.
There is a Matt. He's the field representative.
Take your way. Go ahead, make your little pitch here. I think you've all been given a little information at your spaces.
My name is Todd Williams. I'm with the State of Indiana's Deferred Compensation Plan for state and local government employees. Probably better known as Hoosier Start. And a few months ago, Matt and I, the field representative, we came out, had a chance to meet with Mayor Meyer, Mr. Baker, Councilman Collier, and Court Treasurer Whitmore, and our deputy. And we kind of took a kind of a deep dive into how the Hoosier Start program works. In the interest of time, I won't do any of that tonight, but we'll just share kind of the three key things that the program does to help our state and local government employees prepare for retirement. And prior to doing that, real quick, in each of your packets, in the packet that's kind of hardcover, the employer guide, on the left-hand side, there is an actual blank copy of the resolution and the adoption agreement to use Hoosier Start. And just so you know, you can use the Hoosier Start Deferred Compensation Plan in addition to the Nationwide 457B Deferred Comp Plan that you have now, or you can use it in place of that plan. Totally up to you on how you want to do that. There are some advantages to using only the Hoosier Start plan, and we can talk about that if you like, but it's totally up to you. That said, I did fill out one for you, placed some sticky notes on here on my personal recommendations for you. Shows you not only how to complete it, but things that I would feel would be a benefit to you. I'll share those just for the benefit of everyone behind me, too, particularly those that may be employees that would benefit from this program. The two kind of key things that I recommended here is that if you were to pass the resolution and adopt this program, I would recommend that you allow all employees, with the exception of any independent contractors and any part-time seasonal employees, to participate. So that would include yourselves, any appointed officials, full-time and permanent part-time. The reason, and you could change that if you wanted to, but the reason I did that is because this program has significant advantages in fees. So even if a person works here part-time or has a limited salary, as long as they're in the Hoosier Start program, they can bring other retirement assets they have outside of it into the program and benefit from that. So that's why I did that, to make it easy on your payroll folks as well. The other thing that I recommended was that you allow them to contribute either a pre-tax deferral or an after-tax Roth deferral. Roth is not something that they can do in their perf annuity savings account. It can either be pre-tax or post-tax, but there's no Roth benefit. And that's a really nice benefit without being a burden again on payroll. So it's not for everyone, but for those that it applies to Roth, tax-free income in retirement, it's pretty nice. This one's kind of filled out, and I'll make sure you have that for a leave. So with that said, the three kind of key benefits to this. The first one is because of the way the program's designed, it is extremely easy for your employees to use it. It's also extremely easy for you as a city to use it. So I'm going to kind of leave it at that, and if you have follow-up questions to that, we can kind of get to that. The second one is because not only of the size of a state program, but also the way it's designed is extremely cost-effective. So all of the mutual funds in this program are all institutional share classes. It's kind of like buying things wholesale versus buying them at the retail price. That's obviously a benefit to anyone in the program. Not only in that less of their money goes out the door in investment account fees, but more of the money stays in the account, in an account like a retirement account where you have compound growth over time, many years in most cases, that can make a big, big difference. So I do have some data behind that for you, if you'd like, but I'll leave it for, you know, just like that for now unless you have some additional questions. And the third thing, and this one's kind of near and dear to my heart, this program provides a participant experience for the local government employee and the local government employer that is exactly what you're looking for. A participant experience that is, it's unique in its design, is focused on your unique situation, being that most public employees are going to have perf pension and/or social security in some cases. So you kind of have to build upon that. And it's also unique in that it's unbiased. So the folks that sit down with you and help you prepare for retirement, they're not selling you anything. They have no products in this program at all. They're licensed, knowledgeable representatives, but they're there with the sole focus of helping that person get ready for retirement based upon the programs they already have and where they'd like to be. So they show them the difference between the income they want to have and the income they're going to have if they don't do anything and they just rely on perf and social security. When you break down those numbers, people start to get real interested in their own future. And it really, you see participation go up and engagement go up, and people start getting ready for retirement. So with that, I'm just going to kind of leave it with just those brief comments and open the floor to your questions, concerns, and comments.
Basically giving them another option.
Yes, another option and a very different option than the one that you have now.
Or this, as you said, could replace what exists.
It can. Here's what I would say, and this is also for the benefit of anyone in the room that's already in the Nationwide program. When you replace one that you have, typically you would do that because one of the benefits of this program to the city is the fact that you are not a fiduciary of this program, just like you're not a fiduciary of perf by being a member. The state's Board of Trustees is the fiduciary of Hoosier Start, whereas now you're the fiduciary of your Nationwide program. That's a big responsibility, but wanted to hear that, you know, hear that you don't have to do that. So what I would recommend, though, and I'll give you a copy of one of these as well, it kind of goes into some of those responsibilities, there's a checklist of things that you really want to be doing, because to the extent that you keep the Nationwide program in place, you will remain a fiduciary of that program for as long as you have it, just not in Hoosier Start. That's a nice benefit. However, the only way to stop being a fiduciary is to either terminate the program, which I personally, for the benefit of everyone here, I would not recommend you do that. That would force the money out either to IRAs or to Hoosier Start or something else.
I was going to say, how does that roll over then?
Well, that's the thing, it has to. Anyone that's in the 457 with Nationwide, if you terminate the program-
They're going to have to roll over into some of the program.
They're going to have to come out. And some of them could lose some money. So it's something you want to think about. Also, as an employee, if I'm in the Nationwide program and I'm happy with it, I don't necessarily want my employer to push me out. What you can do, though, if you're interested in phasing that out over time, is something that I put in here, I put this language in here, but it's basically, what it does is it's, in your meeting minutes, you would indicate that for all newly hired employees and employees that are not currently participating in the program you offer now, Hoosier Start would be the program for them going forward.
The program of choice.
Correct. That would allow those that are already in the Nationwide program under IRS guidelines, if they wanted to transfer to Hoosier Start, they could, but they don't have to. That way, everyone's happy and the employer's happy, too. That's a great question.
If we've got people already enrolled in Nationwide and they choose not to, are we still fiduciarily responsible for them as council?
Yes.
As long as Nationwide is open?
Yes.
Yes.
And I think you'll find this very helpful in that regard.
Of course.
The one you said, just to clarify, you said that they could lose money if you forced them out. That's because they'd be sitting in the fixed bucket, right, with Nationwide?
With my personal experience, I've not looked at your individual Nationwide contract, but my personal experience with those contracts is that the fixed account has a 20% restriction on it to where they can only take out 20% of the assets every year. If you terminate the contract, that enacts that. So Nationwide can do one of two things. They can either wait five, up to five years, to move all the money out to Hoosier Start or elsewhere, or they can take a market value adjustment, so in which case they would lose a little bit of the interest.
And that would be their choice of how they want to handle that?
It would be their choice. If you terminated the contract, that's why I say terminate is the top thing to do. Then it wouldn't be their choice, then it's the employer's choice and they're just subject to it. But if you allow them to stay in Nationwide if they choose, then it's their choice whether or not they want to do that. Does that make sense?
I guess, I'm saying, if the city would terminate it with Nationwide, would that be abruptly, you wouldn't have that phase-out period?
No.
And so that's where the employee would get, could get hurt.
Could, yes. That's why, and that's one of the things, when I say that this program is easy, Hoosier Start doesn't have any termination clauses in it. It's not just easy for the employee, it's easy for you. Because if you decide you didn't want to use Hoosier Start, you just pass another resolution and says, "We don't want to use it anymore," and that's it. And anyone that has money in the program is welcome to keep it there as long as they like. You don't have those kind of features.
I don't think because of the amount of participants who are already in the fixed account, there's no, we can't terminate, and I don't think you can terminate until everybody has decided on their own to move money out of-
I would agree with that.
-those things. So I don't think there's any concern from employees that are part of it that you're going to be forced out of what you have. It's just a matter of, the dual fiduciary role is going to go on for as long as the Nationwide is open. But you're never going to start, that's never going to happen. You can't, you know, get rid of that responsibility unless we have another option that's up and running.
Right. And the only reason for my questioning is just so I fully understand that. I'm not looking, trying to push any of the employees out.
Dan has a question back here.
It's my understanding that I would have to separate from the city to be able to move money. How could-
So you're in the Nationwide 457?
Yeah.
You're kind of correct to a point. The only way money can actually come out of that program is if you terminate and point it. Same thing with Hoosier Start. However, if Hoosier Start, the state 457, is available to you alongside your Nationwide, the IRS allows you to, you're not taking it out in the distribution, you're moving it from one provider to another.
The contract that we thought came with the city and Nationwide, does it require separation?
That's to leave, that's to leave, the plan, the 457 plan is the city of Decatur. The plan belongs to the entity. There's providers within that. But with regards to money in a fixed account, that still applies. Like, you cannot move from provider to provider. You still have to meet their guidance and their guidelines. But to be able to move money from a provider to the other provider, there should be no restrictions on that.
No. As long as the city provided plan, you're saying?
Yeah, the plan, the plan agreement, the plan arrangement belongs with the city. The city chooses what providers they want to use. So in this situation, we would open up a second option for participants, or new participants. If people so chose to move their money from Nationwide to Hoosier Start, they could do that. But there would be no obligation to do that. We couldn't require that. But just from a city's perspective, we'll never be able to, you know, divest ourselves from the responsibilities of fiduciary until Nationwide is gone altogether. That may take-
Thirty years.
It could take a long time, sure.
Forty years.
But-
It can take less time, though. The way, you can change the language a little bit, if you, you know, as long as you're stopping new participants, basically those that are already in the program, some may very well decide that they want to transfer, particularly when they look at the difference in not only the service, but the fees. And I did kind of make note of some of those for you. It's interesting enough, you have one of the exact same investments in the Nationwide plan here that we have in Hoosier Start. Not even a similar investment, the exact same investment, with the only difference being you pay a whole lot more for it. And I went on to, I'm sure, Cam, you're familiar with FINRA. I went on to FINRA.org and use the FINRA Fund Analyzer to analyze what that difference makes. It's pretty substantial. The fund that I'm talking about is the PIMCO Total Return Fund, it's a bond fund. You have a, what is basically a Class A share of that. It's a front-end loaded fund. It has a sales charge or a sales load, a commission in the front, it also has a commission on the back. The commission in the front, 3.75%, so every time you put money into that, you lose 3.75% before you have a chance to earn anything. When you sell or move to another fund, you lose 1%. What I did was, the fund analyzer, you can change the inputs, but it gives just a default of $10,000 invested with a 5% return for, in 10 years that you've owned the fund. I went ahead and went with the default, and I compared your version of the PIMCO Total Return to ours. In your version, after those 10 years are up, you would have earned $4,460. In the Hoosier Start version, you would have earned $5,556.67. And that's because in your version, the Class A shares, your total fees and sales charge would be $1,382.51 that that investor would have paid. But the Hoosier Start investor would have paid, there's no sales charges, so they would have paid only fees, which totaled only $578.42. That's one investment. Every investment in Hoosier Start works the same way. They're all institutional share classes. You have a few, but not many. I mean, well, there's a good number, but 22% of your funds have front-end sales charges as high as 5.75%. 3% of them are, three of the funds, 6% have back-end loads, 1%. And the expense ratio to own the funds in the Nationwide variable account was 0.88 compared to 0.69 in Hoosier Start. And that's the gross, to actually rebate a lot of that back to the participants in Hoosier Start. So I'm giving you the worst-case scenario, 0.69, it's really more like 0.47.
I mean, if we were, when you come from a fiduciary standard, you'd be hard-pressed, I mean, you couldn't really make an argument. When you're given two options, you have to look at the Hoosier Start plan and say, you know, my mentality has just been changed. I mean, before, when we had other options, they were presented, Hoosier Start was not one of them, it was, but there were so many of our participants who are in the fixed account. So from an overall cost perspective, right, when you don't consider the fact of restriction, the cost comes in their inability to move money out of it, right? But when you look just at straight-up cost of the platform, based on how our employees were invested, it actually was a very cost-efficient way of doing it. However, just like any insurance or annuity product, the cost is in your inability to move the money. Okay? So that's where it's not necessarily clear when you just look at what are our employees paying for their fees, because so much of the money is in that fixed account. Now, that's not an option, right? If there's no fixed accounts per se on the other thing, but here's the other part of this. From a fiduciary standpoint, you have to look at the availability of the investments themselves. The fixed account would not pass the sting test from a fiduciary standpoint of what we are offering, okay? Now, ultimately, if that's their decision and that's what they want to put their money in, that's one thing, but to say that that's like the default option or what we would put our employees' money in, they would not pass the test. There's so much emphasis on this issue fiduciary-wise when it comes to retirement plans. That's where, I guess, kind of the hair on my neck kind of stands up. Beyond that, right now, with new regulations coming out, with the Department of Labor regulation, which may or may not happen, but at least it'll probably be delayed, there's even greater emphasis on this issue as it relates to, and I would say, to the employees' benefit, as it relates to people like me, trying to encourage them to move money out of their retirement plan. I could not, in good conscience, look at somebody who was inside the Hoosier Start plan and say, "You're better off outside of it," because of the fees and everything in it, okay? Now, there's different, I mean, there's different reasons why you'd want to do that, but those two things combined, I have a hard time looking at the thing, you know, why we wouldn't. Now, it doesn't alleviate us from that issue and that responsibility for Nationwide. We're going to have that as long as anybody of our employees are participating in it. But we're never going to get away from it unless we start in a different direction as well, so.
Are we obligated to offer other plans?
Well, the problem with 457 is that there aren't. I mean, how many providers are there for 457? Are we obligated-
In Indiana?
To offer other options?
No. Your obligation is to provide the best option.
Okay. So it's not-
No. And I think most, having dual plans, dual providers-
Yeah.
I mean, like North Adams, right?
Right.
Went to a single provider for the 403B plan because administratively-
Right.
It becomes a great burden to have more than-
But I didn't know if there's been anything changed since then.
No, but, so administratively, it's a bit more tough to have multiple providers. But, so.
One thing on that, though, too. Dan-
With the Hoosier plan, still, you wouldn't be able to move any money out till you separated from the city?
Correct.
That's true with any, that's true with any plan, yes.
Any other employees have questions back there?
So our fiduciary responsibility, in short sentence, if I'm not, I'm just interpreting or trying to figure out this, is we've got to look out for the best for the city employees on the amount of fees that they pay and the opportunity that they have to make investments, the maximum or best amount of investments.
That's what you're looking at, two big things. What's the cost of investing? What are the investment options?
And the options. And in your opinion-
This gives a better choice.
This is a better choice.
But at the same time-
Larger group than we have.
Well, there's a lot of options, there's a lot of investment options in Nationwide, but the cost of those investments-
Because of the size of the group throughout the state of Indiana?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a lot of it. That and the plan design. It's, I mean, it is a very large group. There's over $1.2 billion invested in Hoosier Start amongst more than 50,000 employees, state and local government.
How long has Hoosier Start existed?
Since 1981. That is part of it, but the other thing is the plan design. There's an independent investment consultant choosing the investments for Hoosier Start along with the Board of Trustees instead of a company that sells investments for a fee, coming in and saying, "Hey, we'll set up a plan for it."
And the intent of this is for state and local government?
Yes, that's the only people that can be in it.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, Todd, thank you very much for the presentation. It's very interesting, and I think it's probably worthy, okay? We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
They're not very much, I want to head back. I know, but if they don't have 457.
Okay.
Right.
Next thing I have on the agenda is-
Schools are not the problem.
Want to bring up the letter that I received from, actually DeVos, Johnson, Swick, Baker, and Ainsworth. Scott Ainsworth is the attorney for North Adams Community Schools. And on the 14th, I believe it was, Jeremy attended a school board meeting. North Adams has been looking at parting ways with Worthman Field. North Adams Schools owns Worthman Field. They own the land that the Safety Village is on, and they were looking at options of possibly selling it or donating it. And I'll read this letter. At the February 14th meeting, the Board of Trustees of North Adams Community Schools determined that there is no longer a need for North Adams to retain the Worthman Field property. Because North Adams acquired that parcel from the school city of Decatur in consolidation back in the 1960s, Indiana Code IC 20-23-6-9 requires that North Adams first offer the property to the city before it would be permitted to seek alternate disposal through sale or gift. Therefore, the board has directed me to formally offer the Worthman Field property, and in capital letters, "as is" to the city of Decatur. The transfer would be in the form of a gift, i.e., no cash consideration. Please advise as soon as possible of the city's intentions, but in no event later than 90 days following the date hereof. Should the city not act within 90 days to accept this proposal, North Adams will consider its offer declined and seek out its other options. I'd like to note that making this, in making this offer, the board was clear that its decision was based upon an understanding that the city intends to maintain the current uses of the property, i.e., Safety Village and Survival Live House, which are great benefits to our community. Thank you. And it's signed Scott B. Ainsworth, who is the attorney for the school board. So, right now, the school board, really the only money they're putting into the Worthman Field facility is their liability insurance that they're paying on it. The city has maintained it, mowed it, re-roofed a couple buildings, taken care of the safety park. I mean, we've pretty much paid for everything else that's going on there. They're paying, they're paying utilities also, right, Dan?
Yeah.
Utilities for the water and the stormwater and liability insurance. I think the liability insurance the school was paying was a couple thousand dollars a year, and their utilities totaled about a couple thousand dollars a year. So with that being said, I would like any discussion and/or a motion for the city to accept this as a gift, make the Worthman Field a-
I feel strongly that we, the city, accept that.
Now, before we, before we get into a motion or anything, we would need to also decide if it's going to be a city of Decatur property or a city of Decatur Parks Department.
But what's the, what's the advantage one way or the other?
Phyllis, is there an advantage one way or the other?
Not really. All the other property we have is under the city of Decatur. I mean, it would just be-
I'd think cities, but-
It depends on who's going to be funding the costs. I mean, if it's, if it's a park property, then the park department would be responsible for incurring expenses or covering expenses. If it's a city property, then it would be the city's responsibility.
City would have more classes building.
Back there waving his hands, Safety Park is another-
I guess, my question would be, is there a, which is the easier way where you have donations? Because Jeff usually writes a United Way grant every year for, that has paid the gas and I think-
More flexibility with the city.
Some other things that have been done. So would there be an easier way? Is there, we still, we still do occasionally give some donations to like Survival Live. So is there an easier avenue to, you know, can we still do that or get better? Can it still apply to the grants and the pricing cost? If it's approved, I'll work with Tim, because there's language in Indiana part 12 that talks about property ownership. And I just want to turn this one to the county. I don't think it's a big issue either way.
Right. Okay. I think, Phil, there would be more flexibility if the city had the ownership. Wouldn't it be?
I, like Jeremy said, there are some provisions in the law. It depends on whether it's being used for park purposes, so-
The Survival Live park wouldn't really be park purposes.
And if parks didn't want to use it anymore, I mean, the city could use it for other purposes.
Right. Because that is actually used not just within the county, that's used outside of the county, too.
Yeah. I mean, I think the first step is, does the city want to accept the gift? And how that's structured within the city, that we can deal with at later time.
Why is "as is"?
"As is" means-
What's the issue there?
Well, it's the light poles, by the way.
Yeah.
If the city was upset, those poles are original.
They're a lot of concrete.
Big. So-
I will say that park board did, we did discuss this in the last park board meetings, and it was the Indiana- and it was the Indiana State Department.
Okay. Answers my question.
And the fence is going to need upgrade. It's got some rough spots in it.
What does?
The fence around the perimeter.
So, the Park Department, knowing what needs to be done, is willing to accept it?
Or very, or very much aware of what needs to be done than they can.
Well, they, yeah, you guys know what's there.
A lesson.
If I would bring up finally-
Digging my eyes out of my head, Alex.
Would Survival Live House in particular, you know, would I, would I need to budget some maintenance there eventually, or would it-
Or fund it?
Or be part of the park? I mean, you know, there would be some upgrades and things that would eventually need to be done at Survival Live, just, you know, a part.
Yeah, I think the Survival Live thing is more of a fire education piece, and so, yeah, it might be something that you're going to always want to every year examine, inspect, and determine if-
There's been inquiries about, you know, Wells County bringing kids to it, and, you know, so I just don't want to see our hands get tied and I, probably it's just language in a grand scheme. But I, I think I don't want to see it limited use because of some, something, something we've overhauled. I'm all for it, but I think we want to, we want to keep it open to. Well, I think when it comes to sharing, like, with an outside entity, it's, I would think it'd be like we do with Wells County for some of our training, our mandatory training we have to have. Maybe hold it over there, we may have to bring a group in, but all the entities in the county use it, and so they rotate, whether it's fees or whether it's combination of fees or rentals or whatever the case may be, is wherever they're going to hold it. So, I would think they could, they could also work out something, whatever entity there is, whether it's a man or a large amount of, somebody from the outside cutting in, or it could be a mutual aid thing, it's, I think that'd be roughly the easiest way.
Well, there is, the Survival Live, there is an organization, loose organization of volunteers that oversee that, that works with the fire department, the police department.
Mike Pattybone is the actual-
Is the president right now.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the gift.
Thank you, Tyler. I got a motion from second, or a motion from Tyler, and the first second came from Craig to accept the donation from North Adams Schools for Worthman Field, the City of Decatur. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. And moving on. Next up, I have a event application submitted for this coming summer's Decatur Main Street Summer Concert Series. And they already have predetermined dates, one, two, three, four, five, six dates that take place on Madison Street between Second and Third Street, starting at 5:30 in the evening until as late as 9:30 in the evening, with anticipated guests of 200 to 600 people. We did this last year, and it was very successful. We had various types of music venues and went great. Craig Koschel has actually been as the applicant in turning this in, and you're doing it on behalf of Main Street, or?
Yes.
Okay. And he's already got it signed off by Greg, Jeremy, and Les. That's Les, I guess.
Well, Jim, Wes, Les is out of the office.
That doesn't look like Les.
No, it's Jim.
Did you write your right name, Jim, or?
I was looking for Les, and I just thought, that doesn't look like Les.
But doesn't look like Jim either. Anyhow, I think you still have one, one other entity to cross, right Craig? And that would be the-
Yeah, the reason I filled this out, because I was going to go to the county commissioners and ask for approval for these restrooms, and they said, hey, start at the city, so.
Yeah. So, I think this is a good thing. We just need to make it approve it, get a motion for this.
So moved.
Get a Matt motion and a Cam second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. Summer Concert Series will take place. Do we have to have council sign that? I want to make a matter of record. Phyllis, did you bring that letter or not, from ACDC?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Adams County Economic Development Commission each year sends us a letter that's for the annual fee for their service. The city makes two payments to them, supporting Adams County Economic Development Corporation. Two payments each, $20,295.15, for a total of $40,590.29. I just need to make this a matter of record. It's something we do each and every year to support Adams County Economic Development. I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
A motion from Wiley, a second from Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. And earlier this evening at the Board of Works meeting, we approved the Master Drive Storm Sewer bids that were turned in. Bids went out for storm water improvements to Master Drive. Three different companies submitted bids. The low bid was plumbing excavating. It includes demolition, installation of new storm water, curb reconstruction, asphalt paving, all the pipes, manholes, everything. His bid was $246,531.39, and the Board of Works approved plumbing excavating, can move forward with that, and I would imagine that that will be taking place here. Jeremy?
Probably within the next few weeks.
Yeah. We will be making contact with the homeowners on Master Drive. In addition to this, we also are working with the engineering firm for new water lines for the same area. And once we have the final engineering done on that, that'll go out to bid. So, in approximately 30 days or so, we should know something on as to whether or not we'll proceed with water lines as well. We sure do want to, since we're going to have it all tore up anyhow. We'd like to replace all the water lines. So, more to follow on that, but I just wanted to mention that tonight. Was Jeremy anymore that we want to mention on it?
No, basically, much project will consist of, what we're hoping for is new water main, obviously, new storm sewer, which this area is very prone to flooding, and at long term it will have new curbing, new driveway approaches, and empty last holes, so.
And, and more streetlights.
Street lighting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've been, we've been working on this project for a long time. We thought we were going to do it last year, and we had to pull off of it. It just wasn't fundable last year, so we're ready to go this year. And then the last thing I have on the agenda was, we had our DNR meeting, the public meeting at Riverside Center. Forgive me, I can't even remember the date. We had the eighth, February 8th, I believe it was, and, was it the eighth? Okay, thank you. February 8th, allowing the DNR to state their whole case as to the plan for the nature preserve area between the river and the Stratton subdivision, and then we allowed homeowners to make comments, and we allowed anybody else from the public to make comments. There are a lot of good comments from both sides. And I invited those, anyone who was present that evening, if they wanted to come to tonight's council meeting to view, could you pull that up, Melissa, on the PowerPoint? View that, the actual plan. We also have the blueprint and plan. This is just kind of our color synopsis plan, if you will, of the nature preserve area. And I see, at least Doug, I know you're from Stratton, I assume that's why you're here. And I know this other gentleman beside you, are you, are you from Stratton, sir?
No.
Okay.
I'm picking up on what I wanted to do one night in college.
Okay.
I'm 71 years old, hearing you say, "How to council work."
You're checking that off the bucket list, huh?
Something like that.
How about that?
That's right.
Doug, do you have any questions this evening? It's, we're glad to try to answer them best we can.
Yeah, I guess the main question I've always had, not such, so much an objection to the project as where, along the line, I did not get to the meeting until about 6:20 due to working, and maybe I missed something. But since, I always thought the land was designated as a flood plain to protect Gerber Buildings and Stratton Place. I moved there in 76. It was being farmed with the crops. Now, whether over the years, federal, state, local, or private, have someone let that go, it's been displaced as really a barrier to our neighborhood, as we found out. Oh, three, as a record, flood may have not been caused any, that may not have protected us, but I was a little offended at the end of the meeting by two comments from the floor that somewhat indicated that maybe Stratton residents didn't know what was going on in their own backyard. I think we do, and instead of going to the library, it was presented, oh, we could have seen all this at the library. I spend more of my time looking at the hydrographic flood rising on NOAA, which indicates historic floods since 2003, seven times, over 20 feet. Yet we haven't really done very much, I think, to this area, to help prevent flooding in that area. But, so I just wondered, I hear about Master, maybe someday, something can be done so our sewers won't back up when we do get high flooding, even if we've prevented the flood only through sandbagging. So, I'm not against that project. I mean, I'm just wondering, is something ever going to be done, you know? As we move into an era where flooding is going to be very much more prominent, I think, due to development there, especially if you want to pour a mainstream, whatever.
We all are. Got to remember, that's not a Decatur project.
Oh, yeah. Here. So, that's just, I just, I also haven't been to the council meeting.
Yeah.
Do you have to break back here if you have any questions or you want to add to it? I can put it out.
And Doug, I talked to your wife just a little bit, and I want to talk to her some more. She approached me at church a couple weeks ago, and, yeah, I assured her, she mentioned maybe we, you know, because where the trails get the closest to the subdivision is right in your backyard.
Yeah, it's the loop there.
Yeah, yeah. It's right in your backyard. And she, and she said, well, maybe we could, maybe the city could plant some trees along there, maybe that could be part of the plan. And, yeah, I agree, maybe, maybe it can be. Jeremy, we'll, we'll talk to the developer and see if we can't do something like that. And then I came back to Cindy, I said, you know, another thing we can maybe do, if you're concerned about privacy and concerned about vandalism and whatever, maybe we need to have kind of a neighborhood watch group. I mean, it's, it's one of those things where, like Greg said that night, they're just a phone call away, so.
Yeah, we enjoy the River Greenway too.
Sure.
That's presently there. I found, though, we, she's talked to many in Fort Wayne just as a nurse party that are a little afraid to use Fort Wayne Greenway, at least by themselves, unless there are. And as we heard, there's been some trades and, you know, not that it would happen here, but we've heard things, we hear things in summer after dark, or that, that's kind of sort of.
Yeah. And Jeremy inquired, was that through the sheriff's department?
Yes.
You know, how many times since the River Greenway was actually built, that the police have been summoned there? And how many years it's-
It's gone on 17 years, if I can go back, and it was right at 15 times.
In 17, it's not-
That was not always the police. A couple, in that report, there was a couple fire runs from campers. There were people camping out, there were a couple medical rooms, along with some, there was really no serious incidents. I'm saying it's always going to be that way, but we just kind of imagine it, have a history on, on River Greenway.
Yeah.
Just a week. Yeah, and it's not necessarily always a call. No.
Yeah.
It could be an incident, something kind of, payback, if you hear something, you don't know what really, I mean, there is, don't make it a call.
Oh, sure.
Because not being it, you don't know. Read through the calls, Greg was 100% right, because it's, you know, somebody called, it's also, or someone was uncomfortable, you know, being there.
Another thing, another area of concern that some people had was with people around, wildlife would disappear. You know, afterwards, that meeting, I got thinking, I live in Lakeshores, and about eight years ago, mallard ducks decided to start coming to our lakes there on their own, and they've been there every summer, and we were already there. So, I'm not so sure, you know, wildlife does-
They acclimate to the people.
Acclimate to, to people.
Yeah, I'm not really that worried about, I mean, we see 470 almost daily, and they in fact really kind of like our mode down there. But, yeah, I don't, they would adapt, I think they would adapt to the, and usually that is that dawn or dusk.
Yeah, right.
Times whenever you left the Stratton.
I guess the biggest reason I asked any of the homeowners after that wanted to come tonight was just to, again, reassure to the people of Stratton, you know, a couple people made comments to me afterwards that the city just doesn't, we're not considering the people of Stratton. Well, yeah, we are, I think, I think we are, and we care about Stratton. We, we're not trying to do something here to punish the people of Stratton. I know we made the comment that, you know, there was kind of an argument between, a comment I made, that most statistics show that doing something like this behind your neighborhood should increase property values. And of course, there was someone there who said, no, it won't, it will not, I guarantee you, it will not. Well, he knew, okay? Kyle Quant, who was there from, she's our grant writer for this particular project, she didn't speak, but she approached us afterwards and said, hey, there's all kinds of data proving that this is not going to deter your homeowners, your value of your homes. If anything, it will only increase, because it's a quality of life project right there. So, it's a good thing, and there's-
And once it's established with DNR, I mean, there's, it's well-established. You know, if it was just open to any developer, you could end up with many other things there.
Yeah. So, I hope that the people that were against it that evening will give us a chance in long term, give it a couple years, embrace it, and say, hey, we're on board now. And like I said, we'll do anything we can to try to help as far as, you know, the police, as far as any trees or shrubs or anything, we can try to do, we'll, we'll do it, so. All right?
I think many, many of the people there's opposition was simply, they hadn't seen this.
Yeah, exactly.
They did not know-
And you know what? What are you doing in our backyard? Type of-
One person thought there was an actual structure going to be built.
Yeah.
Which is not true.
Yeah.
From year to year, also, I mean, from my standpoint, year to year, we're here to address their concerns.
Yeah.
It's not just, it's a gun to be on that, it's always evolved, so if you have problems, if they have questions, or anything like that, I mean, it's a matter of time.
Well, and one thing that Doug raised was the, the impact of flooding and packing up, where you have backups in basements and that sort of thing. The city has done something that we're hoping will help with that, and that is replacement of the interceptor. Because what happened was, the reason it was replaced was, it was so low in the river bank, and it had deteriorated to the point that any time the river came up a certain height, not even flood stage, it would literally fill up with river water. And that would then cause- And that would then cause a backup over on the Stratton side, because your water, your sanitary sewers run to the interceptor. So if it's already filled, there's no place for your sewage to get to. So by replacing the interceptor, that should help significantly in terms of, yeah. So, and that was, that was just completed here this past summer, so.
I hope that maybe the highway will increase flow and make it better, you know.
Time will tell.
Yeah, I mean, you're, everybody's a little bit concerned watching some of the, the rain events that we've had here in the last few years, and, you know, the, the level of the rain event and the frequency they're occurring. You know, there's a lot of arguments about why that's happening, but they seem to be happening. And so we'll find out when we have a major event here, whether or not this has been helpful, yeah.
Any other comments on nature preserve? Okay, if not, that's everything on the agenda as far as the mayor's report. I want to just publicly thank everyone for the thoughts and prayers that were put out to my family the last couple of weeks. I was kinda here and there the last couple of weeks. My ninety-two, ninety-two-year-old mother passed away, and it's all good. She's with Jesus tonight, so everything's, everything's good there, so. But I appreciate all the prayers. Due to that, they postponed the Hometown Collaboration Initiative Forum, which was supposed to have been last Wednesday. They postponed it until tomorrow night. So I hope I see you all again tomorrow night at 5:30 at Riverside Center, which should be a real fun and interesting time of working together in small groups to help the city of Decatur determine a, a project for our future. Either something that has to do with quality of life, the economy of Decatur, or leadership in Decatur. So hopefully, you can all take the time to come at 5:30 tomorrow night at Riverside Center. We will be having pizza and snacks and soda, so hope to see you there. That's all I have. Department heads, Dan, you got anything?
Nope.
Craig?
No, thank you.
Les? Les always has some.
Uh, yeah. Our grass truck chassis is in at first attack, and so our, our new grass truck, we approved, it's gonna move along, I would say relatively quick in this point on, so. So that, that should be made a little ahead of schedule, hopefully, by late summer, early fall. And I'd like to take a, just a brief moment to thank Thunderbird Formula boats for a very substantial in-kind benefit, donation that they made in back in two thousand four after the three flood, the oh-three flood, everything that we used, sandbag, water rescue, whatever, was, they borrowed or stolen from somebody. We had nothing in-house at that time. And Fred Ish and Vic Porter were very instrumental in making sure that, that Decatur and fire trucks have the things necessary to, to deal with those situations. So the first two rescue boats were purchased from them in two thousand four, and those were thirteen years old. And they, they ordered them, and just an inquiry of what they would cost, and they went ahead and ordered them, and said, hey, your boats are in, and one of them, they donated, and the other, they committed, way, way under any other vehicle cost. And so we were able to replace both of the rubber rescue boats for practice work, for what we had, but twenty-two hundred dollars for a few boats that would've been upwards of ten thousand had we had the finance. So just wanna make sure that we, we've got a great corporate community, and they donate, and this is, um, great.
Yep. Thank you to the Porter family. What do you do with the old ones?
Uh, one of them, one of the new ones, we're probably going to, if we keep it in a, in a bag, in a box, and store it in, so we've got, we've got one that's leaking, and it, over the week, it'll go, almost goes flat. We're gonna dispose of that one. That's a good, good thing for council is, have we ever thought about an online, like there's some government sites, you can sell some surplus stuff, have we ever thought about a way to, to get rid of those kind of things? Because the one that's leaking, I would probably put on that type of site, and say, hey, it's leaking, and as is, and, you know, but still probably worth a thousand dollars. Unless it would be somebody locally that works out, or some that could use it, but, you know, it is leaking, but.
Yep. No, I don't know if any, anyone here's looked into a site like that. If you wanna look into it, go ahead.
Well, there is a government site, I just, I could send you the link, and you can kinda see how it works, but.
DRMO, I mean, that's what it's called? Zero M O. DRMO.
If that's what a site like that be, I mean, we're getting a new gas, grass truck, and fire trucks are leaving, that site might be kinda beneficial and part of it.
Mm-hmm.
We, we are gonna have a pickup truck chassis that's a nineteen ninety-nine. It's power stroke, super, power stroke Ford that everybody wants, it's the better version of the.
Four-seventy.
And that, that ninety-nine, it should bring close to what?
You paid.
We paid for it, ninety-nine. If, if you watch these sites, I mean, we're probably talking, it, it should be upwards of, from what we're, we can see online, it should be upwards of fifteen, sixteen thousand, and that's a ninety-nine, but not quite seven thousand miles, so, that might be a really good opportunity to move some of our surplus that's, that's exceptional. It might be something.
Yep, something we should look into, yeah. Roger?
Just wanna wish for us a happy birthday.
That's right.
Thank you, Roger.
Yeah. Twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Jim?
Young and happy birthday.
Jeremy?
Hot hole season was here, we've been out going hot holes. Um, neither's just earth. About it, I guess, had a whole lot to see what, what weather's gonna do, and had several real nice projects coming up, and been kinda working on one of the sites, so, talk more about that later.
Ann?
Nothing tonight.
Melissa?
Anything.
Comments from Tim?
Three things I wanna briefly touch upon. One, SB four sixty-five, which was the bill introduced by Senator Brown to deny subway districts from having access to real property tax revenues, has died in committee. So at least for this session, so thank you for all of you who expressed your points of view in opposition to that bill. Unfortunately, there's another SB, uh, bill in the Senate, SB two thirteen, that has gotten out of committee, that impacts the city with regard to loss of local control. And it deals with wireless support structures that can be placed in the city's street right-ofways. We ran into this a couple of months ago, when a company called Mobility came before Board of Works to request location of these types of poles within the streets, right-ofways, and the city Board of Works declined to give that authority or permission, because we already have so many types of lines in our right-ofway. We have not only the street, but we have our city water lines, our sewer lines, our stormwater lines, we have underground NIPSCO lines, we have underground I N M lines, and we have fiber optic lines. Now we're talking about these poles being placed in our right-ofways, and what happened was, there was legislation introduced that amended an existing chapter of the Indiana Code, Indiana Code eight dash one dash thirty-two point three, which governs this, but it gave local authority to either Board of Works or BZAs, Board of Zoning Appeals, to control replacement and put limitations on these types of poles. The amendment to this chapter basically removes any local authority, and it's now something that has gotten out of the Utilities Subcommittee in the Senate. With this language, it's gonna go to a floor vote on the Senate. Association AIM Accelerated Indiana Municipalities, which used to be Indiana Association of Cities and Towns, has indicated that there's a great likelihood that that will go over to the House. They are forming a committee or a work group to try to work with legislators on the House side to make this bill something that cities and towns can live with. I've been asked to participate in that working group, and I will. They meet this Thursday down in Indianapolis, and we'll see what we can do to either kill this legislation or significantly modify it to return local control to our municipality. And the last thing I wanna bring up is something I didn't bring up at the Board of Works, but it's a significant matter that we need to keep our eye on. There's a case that's been submitted to the Supreme Court. I don't know that the court has accepted the case to be heard or not. That's something that should be happening anytime, if it hasn't done so. It's a tax court case, it's been appealed to the Supreme Court by Howard County, and it deals with big box stores. What it is, is that the tax court affirmed the Indiana Board of Tax Review decision that the way big stores are assessed for tax purposes is being done wrongly, that it should be based on a different formula that basically looks at what the store would bring as a dark sale store, meaning if, for example, I'll give you an example, Kmart store is closed down. It was built as a Kmart store, it's no longer being used, it is vacant, so what would it be, what would it bring now on a second sale? And that's what the tax court has found to be the proper way to assess it, which is far, far less than its current assessed value, which was based on an operating store. The impact of that is awful.
Huge.
It would, it's projected that if that case is upheld, or if the Supreme Court does not take it on appeal, which means then the tax court ruling would stand, it will cause a loss of three point five billion dollars statewide.
Billion.
Billion. It would result in a shift of fifty million dollars to other taxpayers, primarily residential property owners who are not at the tax cap currently. It will reduce seventy million dollars of what the cities and towns would receive. And so, and that's just for the current year. They can go back so many years and request refunds on that, and it then opens the door to, does that also apply to industrial and warehouse facilities, apartments, office space, and shopping centers? So I'm, I'm just kinda giving you heads up, this is a big deal. And if it, if it happens that that is not taken up by the Supreme Court, or if the Supreme Court rules to affirm the tax court decision, then our only recourse is to lobby before the state legislators to change the law to reflect what is an appropriate way of assessing these properties. There's, there's already a method, but the tax court found that the method that's in the law is, is not a, as good a method as what Cole submitted. And, and that was, that it should be based on a dark sale valuation. So I'm just telling you, this could have a huge impact on schools, on cities and towns. I mean, a loss of revenue would be huge, a huge hit.
Is there another direction of going by suit, doing a lawsuit?
No.
That's, this case has already, already been challenged.
So this is, maybe it's just a dark sale valuation regardless if they were, actually had a business in them or not.
Yeah.
It's not just empty property.
No.
So Walmart's value would be as if it was just a shell.
Yeah, CVS.
Why, yeah, how'd that ever get through?
I don't know. Anyway.
So sales tax would go up.
I first heard about this last fall.
This, this is a big deal, trust me. So keep an eye on it. If it, if it doesn't get overturned in the Supreme Court, then probably the only recourse we have is to try to put pressure on state legislators to do something about it legislatively.
Well, thanks for all that great news.
I know.
He comes frequently, you know? Fellas, on your birthday, do you have any words of wisdom for us? Any comments from the public this evening? About council members? I would be looking for approval of the claims, if not.
I'm gonna excuse myself for the vote.
Okay.
I make a motion, will you approve the claims?
Second. Motion from Craig, second from Matt, to approve the claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same. Thank you, we're adjourned.